Good morning, good morning Ayush, good morning Sanjay.
Uh good morning.
Uh good morning Sarav, good morning Ayush, good morning Nagish.
Good morning Nagish sir. Nagish sir, you are not audible at all. Are you speaking to us?
At all, now?
How you are?
Okay, good morning, good morning everybody. My volume was low.
Uh. May I take it?
Ah, your volume is coming well.
Ayush, please check your panelists. Are they there? Mamta Lakshmi, who's the timer?
Ah, Neha.
Name is Gihan.
Gihan Pranav. Sure. Gihan is here. Okay, Neha. Uh Neha Pranav. Mamta Lakshmi Jyoti.
Uh hi DTM Nagish, uh can I use two separate devices for audio and video because my audio is not working on my primary device?
Anything, anything is fine here.
It's good, you can join in from two devices.
Okay, because the primary device is causing some problem with the audio, okay?
No problem, no problem, are you a pan- you are a panelist, no?
Yes.
So which one will you come on video, the other one?
Yes, I will, I will uh mark the. I will mark the audio device as secondary.
Okay, the audio device you can say Ayush Goel backup.
Okay. Thank you.
Sudarshan Sashadri is, who's contact, who contacted Sudarshan? Who Sudarshan Sashadri is contact?
Not mine.
Uh I think I have this number.
Morning Lakshmi.
What, what, what? I don't know. It is.
Good morning everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning everyone.
Um yeah, Ayush, all your panelists are there? Can you please confirm?
Yes, I'm confirming, yes, Lakshmi is there. Uh, uh Dhoni will join at ten, ten, I will call Jyoti once.
Jyoti is here.
Jyoti is also here, uh yes, Dhoni will join in uh around ten five. So yes, Lakshmi and Jyoti are here, Dhoni is joining.
Okay, okay, PO is here, SA is not here, uh Nagish sir, please call Pranap Pothan.
No, I am doing the SA, not to worry.
Okay, so uh Nagish is the SA and uh PO is here, uh who's the T mode, PO is the T mode. Neha, you are the T model, right?
Yes, I quickly want to do an audio check, am I audible?
Ah but video pe nahi aaya hai.
Hah, video me abhi on kar dungi.
So uh next is uh. Mamta, Mamta, Mamta.
I have message Mamta.
Nahi, aap ek baar call kar lo, abhi message karne ka time nahi. Ame call karta hu, aap pe kam kara, sir, 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 time fifty nine. Aap meeting start karo, main Mamta ko call karta hu.
Aam bolie.
Aap meeting start karo, main Mamta ko call karta hu.
Thik hai.
Our uh Mamta ka panelist pe confirm karna hai. Or who's Ayush's evaluator, Lakshmi?
Yes, no?
No, I'm Mamta's evaluator.
Mamta's evaluator is Lakshmi.
So the first panelist is not part of members, okay? Uh okay, let me call her first.
Sanjay, Nagish and Prabha, all the three are there.
Yes sir, morning sir.
Yeah, yeah, panelists are there for Mamta, Mamta has to join. Nah, she is joined.
Yes sir, good to go. Their name, sir.
Yes. Good morning Toastmasters, a very warm welcome to the Sunday special meeting. What a wonderful day we have, a sunny day after the rains yesterday night, I'm sure your Sunday morning has begun well. I am Nagish Ramamurthy, your SA for today's meeting. Let me highlight few important things that are necessary for this particular meeting. This meeting will go on for almost about two hours, request you all to stay here and listen to two panel discussions that we have from two of our wonderful speakers who are moderating it. Please be on the video as long as it is possible and your bandwidth permits it. And as far as audio is concerned, unmute yourself only when you need to speak or when you are asked or called to speak. Toastmasters doesn't restrict anybody on speaking about any topics. However, when you are talking about anything related to sex, religion, politics, be mindful of not hurting people and their sentiments. We request all the speakers and guests to please come on camera and give the support required for the project, people who are taking the project and the panelists. This meeting will be recorded. We will use the recording in our social media channels and for marketing purposes. So those who wish to let us know that recording should not be done, please let us know now. Now, let me take you to somebody who is going to run this meeting after me here afterwards. The person is a financial analyst in a multinational company, who's a very fitness enthusiast and loves to play badminton. The president of Gabby's Online Toastmasters Club. May I request Toastmaster Neha Jain to step forward and take this meeting forward. Over to you Toastmaster Neha Jain.
Thank you so much Toastmasters, DTM Nagish for that lovely introduction. It's a bright Sunday morning and I'm sure all of us are filled with energy and enthusiasm. Am I audible?
Yes, you are audible.
Alright, so fellow Toastmasters and guests, that was our surgeon at arms, DTM Nagish Ramamurthy, let's give a huge round of applause for him. A very good morning to all of you present here, it's my pleasure to be presiding over the Gabby's special meeting on this bright Sunday morning. I call this meeting to order and I would welcome and acknowledge the presence of all the members and guests for this meeting. For the benefit of guests, I would like to reiterate that Toastmasters is a home for people who wish to face their fear of public speaking and not only that, if you love to connect and network with others, if you want to hone your leadership skills, Toastmasters is indeed the place for you. And today, we have a very interesting special meeting, which hosts not one but two panel discussion. I'm, I'm really excited to what's in store for us, the rest of the meeting today. So without any further ado, I would like to call upon the timer for today to introduce his roles and responsibilities, he is an electrical engineer and he is from Sri Lanka. Outside of Toastmasters, he loves playing badminton just like I do, he loves gardening and cooking as well. He is also passionate about welfare and charity activities. Quite interesting, it's none other than Toastmaster Gihan. Over to you Toastmaster Gihan.
Thank you very much, that warm welcome and introduction, Toastmasters of the day. And good morning, uh all Toastmasters, fellow Toastmasters and guests. As the timer today, I will time the panel discussions and the evaluations and also I will alert each session, timing, raising the yellow, green, yellow and red cards. For the panel discussion, the allocated time will be twenty to forty minute. At the twenty minute, I will raise green card. At thirty minute, I will read, I will raise yellow card. And at forty minute, I will raise red card. And for the evaluations, the timing will be two to three minute. But from, by two minute, I will raise green card and two and a half minute, I will raise yellow card and at the third minute, I will raise red card. And for the evaluations, there will be thirty minute grace, thirty second grace period, upper and lower, lower side. So then, when call upon during the meeting, I will uh show the report as timer, over to Toastmaster with the plate.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Gihan for that elaborate introduction of your role. Now moving on. We have someone for the first panel moderation, who is a software development developer at Cognizant Bangalore. She hails from the steel city of India, Bukharo, Jharkhand. Yes, the land that MS Dhoni belongs to. And she indeed hopes to meet him one day. Her hobbies include traveling and clicking lots of photos and she recently covered not just Uti and Kurg but Darjaling as well. It's none other than our panel moderator, the first panel moderator for today, Toastmaster Mamta Singh. Over to you Toastmaster Mamta.
Thank you so much Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Neha Jain. Good morning fellow Toastmasters and my dear guest. The topic for today, for first panel discussion is, India is on the rise, a powerhouse in the making. I totally believe in this topic. The recent space exploration of India, landing on the South Pole of Moon uh in a budget less than a Hollywood movie, uh it's, it's really great and this fact is not hidden from the world how India did it. Being, being from, uh like be it from like a developing country, India knows that which corner to cut and which corner to save, we can say a jugad. By jugad, India did it and not just like space exploration, if we talk about any other sector uh like the IT sector, relationship with India, with other countries, uh bringing the direct uh foreign investment in our country or the world knows how we tackled with a COVID situation. India was the country to develop vaccine, COVID, not just developing vaccine, exporting the parasita mole and other basic medicines to other country, being a developing country. So, India did it and I totally believe in the fact that India is going to be a powerhouse in the upcoming future. Now, let's understand all these details in depthness from the power, from the knowledge we have in the house, we have the right source of knowledge. We have the panelists who are from the engineering background, we have the panelists from the private sector background, which we can say white collar product management job, we have the panelists from the finance background, what could have been the better? So, let's leverage the knowledge we have in the house and understand what the future is going to be for the India. Now, let me call upon the panel one, the panel one is somebody who is, who is passionate about his work at home in a profession or with Toastmasters. From an early age, he was passionate about engineering and was.
Mamta, I'm sorry, um there is a slight this thing, I just before you introduce the panel moderator. Can I, uh I think the evaluator one has to be invited to read out the project guidelines. Right? Neha? Uh we did not have the project guidelines read out.
Yes, yes, yes.
Can you please invite the evaluator one, sorry Mamta, sorry about that.
Sorry, sorry for the slight confusion, but yes, I'm going to call upon the evaluator one of the panel moderator Mamta. Uh she is a behavioral and leadership trainer and working with Akshay Patra Foundation, she facilitates training program across India that upskills and motivates the frontline workers of her organization. She is a passionate speaker, a caring, a caring mom and an enthusiastic Toastmaster. None other than, I would like to call upon Toastmaster Lakshmi Sujata to read out the uh project guidelines, project objectives of the first panel moderator.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Neha and a very good morning to everyone present here. The target speaker for today, uh Toastmaster Mamta is attempting her L five P two project on panel discussions, on how to moderate a panel discussion. The purpose of this project is for the member to apply his or her skills as a public speaker and leader to facilitate a panel discussion. Some of the points that I would be noting down as an evaluator would be the amount of time that is spent uh you know, in the discussion and how the moderator is able to navigate the questions and ensuring the discussion is relevant to the topic. The speech is twenty to forty minutes in length. Wishing my target speaker, Toastmaster Mamta, all the very best as she takes on the role of the panel moderator today.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Lakshmi, now the stage is all yours, Toastmaster Mamta. Toastmaster Mamta, are you there?
I think she's having a tech problem. She is froze.
I think she is back, yeah. Toastmaster Mamta, are you able to hear us?
Yeah, I can hear.
Yes, now the stage is all yours.
You can start beginning Mamta, I think you lost the flow, you start from the beginning.
From the beginning, uh from the topic itself?
Yeah, yeah, from the very beginning, we'll, we'll edit out that portion of it, then we upload it.
Yeah, sure, sure, Toastmasters Sarav. Uh fellow Toastmasters and my dear guest, India is on the rise, it's the powerhouse in the making and I totally believe this line, uh if I talk about the recent exploration, space exploration of India on Chandrayaan III, it is the first country to land on the South Pole and India did it in a budget less than a Hollywood movie and this fact is not hidden from the world. Being a developing, developing country, being, being a country which is having the population, most of the people are from the middle class background and it can, it is a positive factor. And because of this only, uh we know which corner to cut and which corner to not cut to save other money and uh in, in a very less budget, India did it and not just the space exploration. Uh if I talk about from the other angles also like the IT boom, uh India is the first country like we can, uh we can say that Bangalore is known to be the Silicon Valley of India, it is the country which is outsourcing uh soft, software development services to the rest of the world, be it from the IT boom, be it bringing the foreign direct investment to the country or relationship with and uh of India with other countries, powerful countries like US, UK, uh Russia. All those countries we can see that India is indeed on the rise. Uh now, it's just our point, let's understand all those things in detail from the powerhouse we from the knowledge we have in the house, we have the right source of golden knowledge, we have the panelists and the panelists are from, from we can say like the backbone of our country, from the engineering background, the panelists we have from product management background and we have from the finance background, what could have been better than that, right? So, let me call upon the panel one, the panel one is somebody who is passionate about his work at home in a profession or with Toastmasters. From an early age, he was passionate about engineering and was fascinated by how buildings are built. The thrill of construction projects got him to be a part of the building from the age of just eighteen. He says, life gave him early opportunities of outside, outside of Toastmasters and Toastmasters happened to him very late. He is none other than uh DTM Nagesh sir. Please welcome DTM Nagesh sir as panel one. Panel two, panel two is somebody who is a fun-loving, ambitious and sporty person. Apart from her profession as product manager, she finds delight in exploring new places and immersing herself in different cultures through travels. She is none other than Toastmaster Prabha, please welcome Toastmaster Prabha. Coming to the panel three, panel three is, is a chartered accountant by profession, he likes playing cricket, chess and loves traveling, please welcome Toastmaster Sanjay Jain. Now, we have all the panelists in the house. Let me ask my first question to panel one and I'll, I'll be rotating this question to panel two and panel three. Toastmaster uh Nagesh sir, can you tell me what in your opinion are the key factors contributing to India's recent economic growth and development?
Thank you so much, uh Toastmaster Mamta for this question of such a wonderful question. This reminds me of one of the earliest prime ministers had said, China is growing beyond what India is because of their population. And recently about a decade ago, somebody else also had said, we are not developing because we are overpopulated. It's such a great contradiction after so many decades. So what I would say here is, what has triggered to our economic growth? There are three major things as per my opinion. First one is the population. Imagine if you had the population of the country as we had in sixties and seventies, do you think we would have had so much of opportunities? So much of growth? I don't think so, so for me, population is one of the biggest trigger. Second one is, India has got great natural resources. Be it the coastline, be it the land available or be it the anything below the land also, the mines and other things that we have, the agricultural sector, the civilization, the earlier civilization, I feel that is the biggest trigger that has led to the growth beyond any other countries having. And the third and the biggest what I feel that has led to this growth today in India is the talent that we have, look at the talent in Toastmasters today. The talent has been leveraged so very well by the country. Taking the opportunities as it comes, whether it is from east to India or west to India, we have grown tremendously. I would say according to me, these are the three things, we have great population and talent in them and we have also leveraged the natural resources that we have. Back to you moderator.
Thank you uh DTM Nagesh sir, I totally agree the population, we are a country having fifty percent, more than fifty percent of our population who are youth and uh you talked about the history like eighties or nineties. Uh our population or we can say the youth was completely dependent on government to give us the job. Now, the time has gone, gone, we are like the, the rise of the startup cultures, the rise of the shows like Sark Tank India is giving us a new, uh new, new way to think, to create our own job for ourselves. So I believe this is a reason, it could be the reason why India is growing despite having a huge population. Thank you for bringing your points. Now, uh we have panel two, Prabha, Toastmaster Prabha, what, what's your take on this question?
Hello, good morning everyone, um so at present where the economic growth of almost all the countries in the world is torturing, India is marching on the road of development with economic growth of six to seven percent in the. India is marching on the road of development with economic growth of six to seven percent in the last quarter. It is ready to become third biggest economy of the world soon in seven years. So in broader sense, the economic growth and development of India, in my opinion, is probably uh because of the choices India is making and the foreign policy that has been adopted uh from past few decades. So India has started pursuing policy um that is aligned with its market interest. So if we look at the history of two thousand years back, uh India was amongst, uh India was third largest economy in the world, but when British uh captured India in eighteenth century, the economy dropped to two percent of the entire world. Uh sorry, the uh two thousand years ago, the um GDP of India was contributing one-third of the total GDP of world, but then when uh British uh captured India, the GDP dropped to two to three percent uh of the world's uh total GDP. But then um from I think nineties, nineteen nineties, uh we have started taking uh more initiative and India has become open to the uh foreign trade and foreign um developments. Uh and before that, so many, there were so many opportunities India had that it can um invest in uh foreign uh in trades and several other things, but later on, um from past few decades, it has opened up for further developments and in terms of foreign trade. Then um um with that, uh the state, uh the geopolitical status of India has rise, uh has risen um tremendously where uh if you, if you observe the world today, we can easily see uh Russia and China led Eastern Pole and then you have a US-led uh Western Pole and India is in the middle of the uh, uh middle of these two poles. On one side, India is a part of influential eastern groups like BRICS and SEO. On the other side, India is an important part of groups like Quad and I to YouTube. Um today, India decide its own foreign policies itself and according to its needs, India doesn't work under the influence of any other country. The best example that we saw when uh, when Russia-Ukraine war started and India is the only country in the world during this war with which both of these countries are making contacts with and even both of these countries hope for continuous help from India. And I think it is because of our independent foreign policies that in terms of both these countries, uh uh both are making contacts with us and have a, you know, want to be allied with us.
Thanks, over to you. Absolutely. Absolutely, Toastmaster Prabha. I totally agree with that. Uh the, like the modification of the foreign direct investment and the geography of India is contributing. Earlier in the days, our uh for policies were so strict that no any foreign company was ready to come in our country and invest. Now we have modified, uh we have like the ease of doing the business in India has grown and it is the reason why India is growing. Thank you for bringing that point. Now, uh we have the third panelist, uh Sanjay Jan. What's your take on this question?
Yeah, good morning to all. Uh we were the tenth largest economy in the world ten years back. Now we are the fifth largest economy of the world. The key factors for our growth is, one is the economic reforms, then the demographic dividend, which uh DTM Nagasir has pointed out, demographic dividend, where our population is one of the asset to us. Why? Because we have the engaged population in the world, uh and other countries are getting aged. Whereas we are uh growing, we are having a population which is employable. For example, a survey has been done by EY in which it is said that around forty-nine percent of the women's are taking up higher education and we will be having this education uh, uh women population uh which will be an asset to the company, country, uh as they will be uh, uh, uh employable in various fields like IT is there, uh electronics everywhere, mean chartered accountancy and everywhere. So it is a very well served policy. One other factor is the policy, policymaking. The country has a, uh, country is in the right hands and it is doing the right policymaking. Why? Because if you see G twenty now, we will be having the G twenty in our country, which is a very much prestigious issue, but to have the top twenty countries of the world uh been in India. Uh today's economics, uh today's economics times has given a very good article about that, uh about the G twenty, uh which is a very much uh memorable, memorable and uh which will take India to a very uh big heights. Uh with this, I will take, I will take uh uh ask the moderator to take back here. I will continue.
Yeah, thank you Toastmaster Sanjay Jan for your answer. I totally agree with that. Again, uh like we talked about the population, we talk about the democra- demographic dividend, we talk about the ease of doing the business for modification of foreign direct investment, these are the points which we can summarize from the first question. Thank you for that. Now, my next question would be. My, my next question uh would be uh to uh panel one, uh DTM Nagasir. Can you share some examples of specific industries or sector where India has made significant progress in recent years?
Thank you. You started off talking about the space, isn't it, the Chandrayaan? That's the biggest sector that everybody is talking about has grown leaps and bounds. But beyond that, the next what comes into anybody's mind that has grown well in this country is the software and hardware related to IT. But beyond that, it's not just one or two. I can name plenty of them which has grown over the last two, three decades. Infrastructure, medicine, the healthcare, law outsourcing, education, agriculture also, fisheries, lo- look at the logistics. And I don't want to leave the sports and entertainment industries which has grown. So there has been a holistic all-round growth in India. As I mentioned, we have the, we have the space, we have the population, we have the talent. So we have grown everywhere. But what is on two of, uh two top list for me is infrastructure. The cities have come closer. Cities have come closer for two reasons. If you look at the road infrastructure, once a watchway had started the golden quadrilateral. From there, every city has got connected with highways. The road infrastructure has made cities closer, people closer. Second, talking about the same infrastructure, the airports. The, the, the airports have grown in every second-tier city also today. They are connected so very well, be it road or be it airlines. It has given a, uh now we are on the global map as far as these two things are concerned. And every other industry that I talked about revolves around these. Imagine if you don't have connectivity, would you have grown in software and hardware, in education, in any other areas that I am talking about? So for me, road infrastructure and air infrastructure is on the top two as far as India's growth is concerned, as far as areas of industries that are concerned.
Yeah, I totally agree. Uh in your answer, you mentioned that we are like uh, uh recent Chandrayaan three, we did the progress, IT boom, we did the progress, but agricultural sector is unique for me. Uh I would like to request the panelist to, Toastmaster Prabha, to uh to bring light on this agric- agricultural sector progress, how that is like this sector is progressing and how this sector is like uh adding up to the GDP of the country.
Uh, thank you for asking the question. Um I have a very little knowledge uh about the agriculture um sector and I, uh based on my research, I think there is a shift from agriculture and there's a growth in the services which has played a huge role in India's growth. So I would like to talk about um, uh the service sector of India which has played the huge role in India's growth, probably uh panelist Sanjay Jan would like to throw light on the agriculture sector. So uh according to me, India, uh, uh the startup and you know, startup with technology and innovation has played a major role in the growth where India is IT, India's IT and software industry is well-known globally. It is a hub of development and maintenance and support services to global countries. Traditional sectors such as e-commerce, fintech, um supply chain and logistic internet software and services do dominate the area. But a strong wave of unconditional sectors such as content, gaming, hospitality, data management and analytics are making their place on the list. And uh fintech products are growing rapidly to make the digital payment easy and improving the business quality. So if you look at UPI, peer-to-peer lending, uh, uh peer-to-peer lending, mobile wallets, uh these are like a major game changer in terms of uh our um uh improving the digital uh payment system where UPI is the product of India and now it is all set to uh adopted worldwide. So it has played a major role in, in the growth. Um thirdly, if you look at the number of startups in India, it is close to uh one lakhs, which is uh to be precise ninety-two, uh ninety-two thousand precisely and India ranks uh third, um uh third in the world in terms of having startups. And the value output score of those startup is again uh, uh greater than even China and other several uh great powers of the country. So uh one of the factors which contributes to the growth is technology and innovation. Second, I would like to highlight the pharmaceutical sector where India's pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical sector uh has gained prominence for its generic drug manufacturing cap- capabilities and vaccine production that we had seen in during pandemic where our country uh supplied a lot of uh uh drugs related to um, um COVID vaccination. And it is supplying affordable healthcare to both domestic and international market significantly. So yeah, these are the two specific industry that I wanted to highlight. Thank you. Over to you panel, uh moderator panelists.
Thank you, Toastmaster. Thank you, Toastmaster Prabha for bringing the points like you, you brought the points, digital payment, rise of the UPI uh payments, uh tech and innovation, startup culture, healthcare sector, IT outsourcing, all those sectors where India is growing. But we should not ignore a fact that seventy, seventy percent of the population in India are from the agricultural background. They are the farmers, they are the backbone of our country and they are not directly uh involved in this digital payment. Digital payment, I can say they could be involved, but they are not directly involved in IT outsourcing, tech and innovation, startup, healthcare, they are not directly involved. So my question to my next panelist, Toastmaster Sanjay Jan, if we want to leverage this seventy percent of the population, which is the, which, which are the farmers and if we want to leverage this population to grow our country, then how it could be?
Our, uh, uh, thank you very much. Our, if you see, the agriculture sector is a boom in India. We are able to export uh many things. If we stop our exports, uh we can see yeah that many countries are struggling and are in starvation. Uh so our, our country is very, very planned and the green revolution has brought many changes in our country. We, we say it is a backward, why? Because we do not know the value of what we are getting in a year. Uh we are getting at a very cheapest rate, all the products, everything. Uh then also, uh our people will say that agriculture is the, are, why? Because there is some hidden uh bottleneck in that. There, there is no farm reforms, which our, our government brought the farm reforms in twenty twenty. But there was some protest because of political will and things like that. So that farm reforms could not come. If the farm reforms would have come, then it would have changed the landscape of our farmers. Why? Because uh it is uh very interesting to understand that a farm reform is required. When you have to scale up the things, you have to bring corporates into it. And when you bring the corporates and things like that, then only the country will grow. Why? Because you get the funds easily at a very cheap rate, uh the funds, uh no means nobody is going to invest when it is an unorganized sector and things like that. Uh people are not going to invest. For example, if we, we are buying any shares in that, in, in the country, we see the background of the company, like what is the financials and things like that, then only we start investing in that. Uh by, when in unorganized sector, uh we do not know what is the background and things like that, why? Because nothing, nothing is published. So, so it is a thing that uh, uh a cooperative, cooperative movement will take India to a great heights like Amul cooperative movement, which has taken, which has uh beaten the MNCs companies to a large extent. Like that, we should have at each and every state level, some cooperative movement so that the country will go to the next level and things will flow. So it is my take on this here.
I absolutely agree with Toastmaster Sanjay Jan. Thank you for bringing the point like the green revolution. We know that uh when we got, uh when we got independence in nineteen forty-seven, after that, India was like not in a good situation and uh in nineteen, I think in nineteen fifty-five, green revolution uh came uh that was proposed by Indira Gandhi and after that, the agricultural sector, which is supposed to be the seventy percent of uh seventy percent, which seventy percent of the population does that agricultural sector boom. But you have uh highlighted the points, how to, how to grow this agricultural sector also. You highlighted like bringing the farm reform, bring the example of the Amul, how the cooperative movement came and like uh uh like increased the uh business of Amul and it has increased to such extent that it, it has even beaten the uh MNCs like F G, we have the every day. So Amul has beaten the FMCG business also with such cooperative movement. Thank you for bringing the point, Toastmaster Sanjay Jan. Now, uh let me ask the next question. My next question would be to panel one. It is uh what are some of the challenges and opportunity faces in terms of infrastructure development to support its growth?
Opportunities and challenges are um two sides of the same coin always. There is a dichotomy. Now, look around you. When you walk, when you drive, just when you sit in this, sit out, what do you see? Sound, smoke and smell? I would say the unplanned growth of this country is the biggest challenge, not just in, in, in the infrastructure, but in any sector. If you stake even in the e-commerce industry, the way it has grown, uh I think to some extent, there has been no planning and regulation. That's one challenge that I see where there has to be some amount of regulations that needs to come in. Secondly, I would want to talk about the opportunities that you asked. Um opportunities are around looking at those areas which are still untapped. We just not talked about agriculture. Uh if you see and you would have heard, lot of people are leaving the rural areas, which is about seventy to seventy-five percent of the population, coming back to the urban areas. But lesser-known stories are where urban population is going back to the farming. Lot of people are doing it, especially in the dairy sector. That area is still not very fully tapped. So there is a great potential over there. While we are growing like this, there's another challenge and I see an opportunity there. The challenge is the corruption that we all know is very rampant. The opportunity there is, again I tell, that people will have to focus, those in power and in legislature will have to look at, how do we corrupt this? Otherwise, I'm telling you, in any industry, there is going to be an un- uh uncontrolled growth, which will lead us to nowhere. I would say it could be a catastrophe that may be happening in the years to come. So there are challenges, there are opportunities. When there are challenges, those opportunities which are coming in the way will have to be looked at and will have to uh probably work. will have to probably work around it. Back to you, panel moderator.
Thank you, thank you, thank you D T M Nagesh sir for bringing your point. You have brought two points, unplanned growth and uncontrolled growth, right? So as per my understanding, growth is a growth, whether it's a planned growth or unplanned growth. At the end of the day, it is contributing to the growth and the rise of the country. So how unplanned growth or uncontrolled growth could be a challenge? This question is to my second panelist, Prabha.
Could you please repeat the question?
Okay, so my question is unplanned growth and uncontrolled growth. At the end of the day, these are called the growth, these are contributing to the country. So how it could be a challenge?
So when, when the growth is unplanned and uncontrolled, it, it may cause haywire uh in all over the, uh in all the states of India, probably everywhere. And it will be very difficult to measure the growth of the, uh growth of the in various sectors where this is uncontrolled and unplanned. So in order to uh curb this situation, what we can have is like we already have this digitalization which is making, which is, which is, which can help government to measure or the or you know, measure the growth of these different types of growth. And ultimately, it does contribute to the growth of entire economy. But the problem would be is that we won't be able to put it in the papers and won't, won't be able to, you know, count it in the G D P as such. So if you look at the G D P calculation, there are four major factors which contributes to it is that consumer consumption, then there is private and public spending and then there is, you know, exports, imports factor and then other one is this thing, I, sorry, I forgot. But like in, in these, all these consumption and export import, if things are happening unplanned and uncontrolled, there is no supervision over that. Then we won't be able to, you know, take, take in account of these things while calculating our G D P. So it has to be regulated, but I think we are moving towards that path where where because of the Aadhaar system, digitalization and the tracking is there, what is happening all over the India. We are able to track. So yeah, I think it's going towards the right direction. Thanks.
Over to you, panel moderator. Thank you Toastmaster Prabha. You reminded me a point that you cannot make something grow if you cannot measure that thing. And you have brought a right point regarding the tracking and supervision. We have the U P I payment, we have like tracking, U P I payment, Aadhaar, digitalization. We are all such tools to track the growth and development. I totally agree with that. Now, moving to my third panelist, Toastmaster Sanjay Jan, what's your take on this question? Challenges and opportunities, challenges for the India to grow.
Uh major challenges for India is the fund, funding and investments, then regulatory and bureaucratic hurdles. Uh then quality and maintenance, environmental and social impact and skill shortages. Now, I'll be a love writing on this. One is the fund and investments. Uh we, we should have, uh we should have a policy where we can attract a good amount of F D I into the country. If we are able to attract them, then there will be all round progress in every field. Whether it is infrastructure, whether it's education, everything means so that the, the if a proper amount of fund is coming to the country and uh it will develop means unemployment, it will solve the problem of unemployment and everything. So that fun, funding is the major challenger, which because of various regulations, like F M R regulations and things like that. The fund, fund restrictions are coming and things like that. So the government can means think over and bring some simplified process. So that funding, funding from foreign countries can come to India easily as now India, India's story has started. And things, it is the right time to have a right policy and to attract the funds. One is that then regulatory and bureaucratic hurdles. We have lot of, we say that ease of doing business. But today, if you see, there are changes, I appreciate that there are various changes coming in like G S T and things like that. But till now, we are not able to have a single window for all this compliances. Whereas we have to go to various websites and do things like that. Instead of that, if you have one single platform to solve all the problems. Uh so that it becomes easy for a government to think and even for companies to invest in that thing. Then the third is environment and social impact. Uh various projects have been in bottleneck because of environment clearance. Well, because of anybody coming and putting a writ or something in the court and saying that there is environment thing without understanding the economic benefits. If you see in Gujarat, Narvada, Narvada Canal, uh Narvada, which was, which was at Sabarwati Ashram, which was means stopped because of some movement. Uh but after its, its implementation, we can see the benefits, means it has gone to a farthest, farthest uh place so that it is for the country and people to understand that any change will have resistance. But whether it is good for the country and good for the people or not, that has to be taken into account before deciding that and stopping any progress. So back to the panel moderator.
Absolutely. I totally agree. You, you have brought a point regarding the Sabarwati Ashram in Gujarat. And similar incident, it reminded me of a similar incident, what happened with Nano project in the West Bengal. Because of certain policies, the nano, that manufacturing of the nano vehicle was, was not successful in West Bengal, Bengal because of policy. So I must say that the local policies also are somewhere hindering the growth of the country. And you have brought another point, the lack of funding. But yeah, currently it's the problem that we do not have much fund. But looking at the recent growth of the India, a lot of foreign investment are coming and investing in our country. Look at the stocks of companies, look at the Nifty, how it is growing. And not just the private sector, look at the P S U or even the defense sector. Like the recent launch of, launch of Chandrayaan three has just boomed the defense sector stocks like H L stock is booming, aerospace sector stocks are booming. So I must say that this is the problem, but I am very bullish about the future that in the future, it will be eradicated and it will lead us to make our economy thirty, thirty, thirty trillion economy in the future. Thank you. Now, my next question would be uh to panel one, in what ways can India leverage its cultural diversity and heritage to strengthen strengthen its position on the global stage?
Well, cultural diversity. I'll take off from what you asked me, challenges and opportunities last time. There is an opportunity that I missed mentioning about. You travel anywhere from the place you are today sitting, fifty kilometers in any direction. Three things change, the culture, the food and the climate. So, there is a great opportunity for us to look at one big area that has been still untapped. The cultural tourism. I would say, how many of you have also looked at Echo Village? Uh going to Echo Village during the weekends. There is a booking for three months. If you have to go there with your family in a weekend. Some of the areas you will get it in maybe fifteen days, twenty days booking, but bigger ones, the best ones, two, two and a half months of booking is there. So, going back to the roots is one big opportunity is what I would say. Now, talking about the cultural diversity, we have twenty-eight states and eight union territories. When we drew the border, we all drew it based on the languages and the culture that is prevalent in the country. So, we have to leverage that and look at how there is an opportunity there to see that a new industry can flourish. I would say, cultural diversity and the heritage of this country has a greater impact, so much so that lot of people outside the country come to us seeking the way we have led our lives. Beat yoga, beat traditional medicinal practices. Beat staying here and doing the, the medical tourism that is flourishing. It's all because of the kind of heritage and the cultural diversity we have. That's one big opportunity is what I see is still untapped. Back to you, panel moderator.
Yeah, I completely agree, like the yoga and the traditional medical practices, which we can say Ayurveda. And now I can see that people are getting aware of that, the benefits of Ayurveda a lot. Thank you for bringing the point. The same question, I want to rotate to my panel to Toastmaster Prabha.
So, India's rich cultural and heritage can be a powerful asset for strengthening its position on global stage. Leveraging these assets effectively can enhance India's soft power and global influence. So some of the ways that I think it can leverage its cultural diversity and heritage is through tourism promotion. So having diverse cultural and diverse culture and heritage. It is a major attraction for tourists and it can boost economy and improve India's global image. We have so many in every part, every state represents a different culture here in India. And we, and, and people coming over from world finds different I mean, going to different places in India and they, they resonate with those places because first, those sort of culture is missing in India, in other parts of the world. And second is, our culture is very unique and different. And so if we can, you know, promote tourism and have a clean or sustainable ways to promote tourism, it can contribute to the growth. And, and provide the global, provide the, I mean, position in the global stage. Second is cultural export. We have music, dance, cinema, fashion and cuisine. These, these things have global appeal. So, if you have noticed, because of the India's great digital presence, our music and dance styles have been getting adopted by different parts of the world. And we have been seeing, I mean, conventional songs or maybe songs from nineties or seventies getting danced by so many performers from the outside world. Then India, India can also host international cultural festival and exposition to attract global attention, just like N M A C C was conducted by Nita Manik to preserve and promote Indian arts. So it brought out a glorious and authentic side of the India that is many times overshadowed, shadowed by other things. And lastly, like D T M Nagesh sir has mentioned traditional medicine and yoga. India's traditional medicine system like Ayurveda and practices like yoga have gained international recognition already. And promoting these more will definitely strengthen its position at global stage. Uh various meditation programs have been conducted throughout the world by Sri Sri, Ravi Shankar, Sadhguru and other foundations have already reached to millions of foreign people to attract meditation and inner peace, which are I'm, one of the example that I recently, I saw is when I visited Oroville, that is Mathrimandir. Oroville is a place where I saw people from like France and other Europe countries. Where I got to see the different culture and I mean, it's, it is, it was so different and unique that I was wowed by how India is attracting different people from the world. Over to you, panel moderator.
Thank you Toastmaster Prabha for bringing your points. Now we are running out of time. Just a quick, quick question to the audience. Now we are moving towards the Q and A round. Any questions from the audience?
I do have a question.
Okay, I cannot see any raised hands.
I do have a
Okay, yeah, D T M, sorry.
We have
Please, please ask your question.
Okay. Uh no, not really a question, but actually I'll play the devil's advocate here. You know, I, I hear all this chest thumping about India and being a global powerhouse and all that. It's all over the internet, right? And I'm, I'm speaking in a group where except to everyone else is an Indian. But I'll still ask this question that how much of this is something that, you know, how much of this is covering up also that things are not going well, right? And we always keep talking about this toxic positivity and the toxic optimism. And I seriously have a problem with that. Like one of the panelists mentioned about people filing P I Ls to stop development. The P I Ls are filed also because there is a reason for V I S to be filed. It is a real problem that the industry is actually eroding Taj Mahal. It is damaging Taj Mahal. So if a P I L has been filed for that, for Yamuna and for Taj Mahal, that P I L has been filed for a reason. So I, I have a serious issue with people pushing things under the carpet. And I just wanted to hear what the, you know, what the panelists, at least maybe Nagesh or anyone. I mean, what is your thought on this? You know, isn't there too much of toxic positivity that's happening in this country?
I want to rotate this question to D T M Nagish sir.
I was about to take it. Yes, there is toxicity, toxicity. There is lot of things that is going under the carpet. That's the biggest challenge. I mentioned about corruption. Anything you raise is actually pushed underground, I use what I would say in our country. Opportunities are not, is not being leveraged well. While there is opportunity, somebody tries to do something, there is definitely an opposition. While you talk about Taj Mahal, I have been seeing Taj Mahls in seventies, the way it is getting eroded. Seventies to two thousand twenty-three, what have we done about it? Nobody wants to preserve something that is precious in this country. Let alone a monument, even a human being, if he or she is precious, is killed. For the individual benefits, for the benefits, short-term myopic vision of people and also very short-term big gains that we have. It's all political in this country. The opportunities are plenty, a plenty, a plenty. But nobody wants to look at those opportunities, keeping aside selfish motives. Everybody has got a hidden agenda. When something erupts, it is blown out of proportion and nobody wants to give a two hoots about it. Any news that is big in proportion is forgotten very easily. We have this tendency of forgetting things. So, I would say it's the biggest ghost that we have, the corruption, selfishness. Individual motives, the hidden agendas. It is not just in this country. Maybe it is more in proportion in this country, but every country has it. Only that we don't get to hear it. We only look at Indian news. We are busy with Indian news. It is happening everywhere. So I would say, we all have to focus on that. There is a need to look at this dichotomy together. Opportunity and the challenges. There are powerhouses which work on opportunity. I wish there are people who bring in focus on the challenges also that we have. Maybe there is a big business to work on these challenges. I don't know. Maybe there is.
I think question answered. And yes, but we that ask your question that we, I'm sure, in analyst will That ask your question that that we am sure uh in analyst will. To you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Mamta. That was indeed a wonderful panel discussion. I really love the poise and calmness that you conducted the panel discussion. And of course, the insightful opinions that our panelists, D T M Nagesh, Toastmaster Sanjay. And Toastmaster Prabha had to share. I think it was a fantastic panel discussion and thank you for conducting it. So wonderfully well. And now, moving on, we have. One more panel discussion on a very unique and a different topic from what we already discussed. And for this, uh and to introduce the project objectives of the panel moderator too. I would like to call upon the evaluator of the panel moderator. Who is a banker by profession and a storyteller by passion. He believes that Toastmasters is a platform that gives voice to your voice. That indeed is very true. It's none other than D T M Sudharshan Sheshadri. Over to you, Toastmaster, D T M Sudharshan.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Office. We've already witnessed a rousing panel discussion on a topic which is close to all our hearts. The next one promises to be exactly that and a little more. In my capacity as the evaluator of this panel, the center of attention for me would be the panel moderator, Toastmaster. Ayush Goyal and the objectives with which he is going to conduct the panel discussion is. To demonstrate his skill as a public speaker, in which he will try and attempt to lead and facilitate a panel discussion. The time allocated is twenty to forty minutes and the topic of this particular discussion as near as already revealed. Is extremely interesting. It deals with body positivity. I would like to wish all the very best to Ayush and his panel. Back to you, Madam Presiding Office.
Thank you so much, D T M Sudharshan for setting the project objectives right. And now. Our panel moderator too is from the pink city Jaipur and currently lives in Hyderabad. He works as a business analyst in a startup. His hobbies include reading, writing, watching movies, dancing and exploring new places. Yes, indeed, I'm talking about Toastmaster Ayush Goyal. Over to you, Toastmaster Ayush.
Uh hello, am I audible?
Yes, Ayush, very clear.
So, good morning, everyone, and welcome to this panel discussion on the topic, the two sides of body positivity. Now, introducing a topic a little. We, I think everyone of us in our childhoods would have come across some person who has been bullied because of their body. Or we asked us might have been bullied. This must have impacted a confidence to do certain things in life. Almost everything, but yes. And as we grow older, we try to find things, solutions out of it. And one term that you come across is body positivity. Now, I don't know if it is a concept, strategy, buzzword, or whatever it is. So for this, I have decided, I have called upon few experts who can, who can enlighten us upon this topic. They are from a variety of backgrounds, so so that we get a broader viewpoint of on this topic. Now, I would like to introduce the panelists, who are the experts, who are the panelists for the discussion. Our first panelist is a certified image consultant and soft school trainer by profession. She has trained more than thousand students to become a better communicator and leader. She believes that everyone should respect their body, which has been blessed by nature and create likewise. Invite a first panelist, Sheelakshmi Hegde.
Thank you, Ayush. It's my pleasure to be moderating here as a panel moderator. Thank you very much for having me here.
Our second panelist is a personality development coach and an artist. She has helped many people improve, excel in the field with her soft school training. According to her, body positivity is nothing but being comfortable in your own skin and however you are, just feel. Just feel positive towards it and accept yourself and your flaws. Our second panelist is Dhoni Adisara.
Thank you so much and hello everybody. Thank you for having me here today.
And our third panelist is a health coach and education advisor. She has helped many people in weight management and lifestyle issues herself. She believes in a whole six health of living. Please welcome Jyoti Mandan.
Thank you, thank you, Toastmaster Ayush. It's my pleasure to be here.
I would like to welcome all the panelists here and from now we will begin that, begin the discussion on the topic, the two sides of body positivity. So, my first question is to Sheelakshmi. As an image consultant, what is your perspective on body positivity?
Thank you, Toastmaster Ayush for this question. For me, the body positivity is being happy and confident in whatever body you are blessed with. You are blessed with. Most people have different opinions about their body positivity. By seeing their favorite celebrities, whether it's Deepika Padukone or Ranveer Singh. Some people think that I want bodies like Ranveer Kapoor or this kind of things they are running in my, in my mind. They will do extreme out of the box, like doing too much of workout to gain body like their favorite celebrities. And consume lot of foreign foods, protein shakes, this kind of thing. But this is not acceptable. They are doing it as part of their project, like cro- multiple, multiple crores were invested on celebrities. So they are doing this kind. If they are normal human being like us, they would definitely been, they would have definitely been like us only. That is the main thing people, people feel, they are seeing them, they feel underconfident. Being an image consultant, it's my point of view is, we should. Uh think of that point of view also and very, very important is you should accept the body. We are born and blessed with it. And if you want to have a healthy body and a mind, it's very, very good to have exercise. It makes you, makes us feel body calm and mind also calm. That is one thing. And one thing, if you want to have, and one, and one thing is please love your body, whatever body you are blessed. And some children I have observed cursing, fighting with their parents because of you, I am this, I am this, you married my mom. So I have, I have, I am little bit on heavier side. This is not right. Please love the body you are born and blessed with. That is the first step of success and if we accept it, we will fall in love with yourself. As I always mention. Self-love is very important in every human being, for everyone. Over to you, Toastmaster Ayush.
Thank you, Sheelakshmi. So Dhoni, I would like to ask you, like Sheela, if you mentioned that people see a lot of people on the, on the internet. Showing their, their exercise and diet. But I would like to ask you, is it not beneficial for people to know? Like what are the different options in which they can improve their body or like is it harming the people more?
Okay, so uh with respect to exercise, are you asking me that?
Yes, with respect to the exercise and different diet that we have in the world now.
I feel that we are living in this world where we want to live up to the society's norms and expectation. Don't you all agree to me in this aspect? If my friend is doing intermittent fasting, oh, she's doing it, even I wanna do it, even I wanna lose weight. But does your body support that? That's the question that you need to ask yourself and your body. I feel that diet and have, and doing fast and doing, having a stipulated diet form. With all the plenty of diets that we have in the world today, with seventy-five days challenge, intermittent fasting for that matter. It depends on a person's choice and body. Just because your friend is doing it doesn't mean that you're also supposed to do it. And that can also, to certain extent, if you, if you eat in a particular manner. And if you have a diet where you want to eat junk food and you want to eat everything, but then you are also challenging yourself that, no, no, no. I also, I wanna reduce weight and hence I am gonna do this challenge for some time. Now, what happens is when you start eating again, you start eating the junk food again, your body does not absorb it. Now, once the body does not absorb it, hence you again start gaining and you'll be like, oh my god. I did this particular form of diet, but it did not work out for me. So diet is nothing but having a good lifestyle and eating good food and healthy food. It does not mean that you are not supposed to eat chole kulcha for that matter. If you're not supposed to eat junk food for that matter. You're supposed to include every aspect in your food, but make sure that there are certain limitations to it as well. It's not like you just keep eating and harming your body. So I feel that exercise and diet is good. But do what suits your body rather than what you get inspired by people.
Thank you, Dhoni, for sharing the light on, on dieting and exercising. Now, Jyoti, as a health coach, like what do you think? Like how is this concept of body positivity? Accepting however you are impacting people's lives.
Thank you so much, Ayush. So, uh as a health coach, I see a lot of people are um. Uh having different opinions on their body type, like self-body, uh like body positivity. So, it's good to accept their own uh body, whatever the shape, size they are. Because uh there are two things which we cannot change, like uh color, height, uh but we can change shape. Uh the way we look, right? But what I feel is, there are three things. Negative body image, uh positive body image, third thing is positive body image with good health. So a lot of people think that positive body image is good. This will help in emotional health as well because the way we feel. It affects our emotional health, right? If we are feeling good, talking some positive information about our own body, we are feeling better in our own way. But it doesn't mean that we are healthy internally. It's very important to uh work on physical health as well. Along with feeling about our own, like positive body image. So that's what I feel, it's uh, it's important to understand our, understand our own body type. Uh and also as um, uh the panelist too, like Dhoni and Shrilaxmi mentioned that. Uh it's important to understand what suits your body. And one more thing I would like to mention. In our olden generation, ninety percent of diseases didn't exist. And ninety percent of packaged foods were not there in the supermarket. The way we are eating now, we are redefining that as diet, but it's not a diet, it's just eating healthy food. Just like our Nari and Dari used to eat. And now we have changed completely about instant food like Maggie. Uh and then packaged foods, chocolates, cornflakes, all these came in the supermarket and we are adapting that. And now we are going back, redefining as a diet.
Thank you, Jyoti, for telling us how exercising has to be included along with body positivity also. Now, Sheelakshmi, I would like to ask you, like, whenever someone tells that, tell. Uh someone suppose with the body image issues, how convenient it is to tell them that you have to work on your health?
Definitely.
They are not comfortable with their body.
Huh.
I feel most don't have, uh say, fast routine for exercise or diet.
For someone who are not comfortable with their own body, first we should work on their internal issues, not on the body. Like, not, not outside, like if you, they will compare themselves with someone, like might be your shame from childhood bullying. They might have suffering from that if someone is having those kind of issues. For those kind of people, they should accept that this is what I have, this is my, I am blessed with it. I should love it. As image consultant also, we always tell people, please love your body, love yourself. Self-love is very, very important. Whatever you are, you are, that is the biggest asset. Love yourself, accept yourself, you are, which is the body you are blessed with. And if you are, if you are having certain, if you want to, if you are, if you practice certain self-love. And you will feel, definitely you'll feel confident within yourself and you will work on yourself like whether it's. You want, you can be, live a healthy life more than everything is, happy and healthy life. But that you can work on your mind, like meditation and mind exercise, like not that you want to be complete, you want healthy body and mind, that is one thing. And make sure that whatever body you are having, you should able to carry yourself very, very well. As image consultant, that is my opinion. You should want, whether you are skinny, it doesn't bother. If you are confident about yourself, if you are able to carry yourself very, very well, that is very important. You should able to carry yourself very, very well, confident in front of other people. If some people uh come, compare themselves with, oh, he's, she's very skinny, I'm little bit healthier. Don't do that. This is not good for you, good for your health. This is not good for anyone. This spoils your mind, your health. Please accept yourself, fall in love with yourself, please practice self-love. This is my opinion as image consultant. Over to you, Ayush.
Thank you, Sheelakshmi. Now, Dhoni as a soft school trainer, I would like to ask you that, as Sheelakshmi mentioned, that we should post on a self-love. Before a physical health. So like, can that benefit people to develop their skills and confidence?
Okay, absolutely. If you start loving yourself, the first thing to do to develop your skill. Is to understand yourself. If you want to develop a skill, you need to know what are you and what are the things that you need. To work on, basically. Now, when I work with my clients, I start my session by asking them. Tell me about yourself. Tell me good points about yourself. What do you love about yourself? And the worst part is, people can't even speak. They're like, don't ask me such questions, Dhoni. I don't know about myself. Probably my friend will describe me in a better manner. That's where we lack. So, the first thing, like how Sheelakshmi mentioned, is to understand yourself. Now, we people, we absorb negativity very quickly. Now, is my five fingers same? No, right? Each of them are different. So in the similar manner, everybody is different and every body type. Every person's pers- perspective as well as mentality differs. So before making any judgment about yourself based on what others perceive you, see yourself from your lenses. And think that, what am I? What is the skill that I want to learn? Who am I as an individual? That's something, that's when you start your journey of improving yourself. And start your journey with positive mindset, that will lead to a positive and healthy lifestyle. So that's my take on this.
Thank you, Dhoni. So Sheelakshmi and Dhoni mentioned that we should first focus on us, on us, in ourselves rather than out of physical self. And we can gain confidence from that. But now I wonder, and I want, I want to ask you, Jyoti, if that can create any complications. Further complication with people, if they take too much time in achieving this, what will, how will it impact their health? They are already in a not so healthy condition.
So what I feel is, whatever they mentioned, I agree with that because uh. It will take time to work on physical health, at least to see some changes. It will take three months or two to three months. Before that, if we start talking about ourselves in a positive way, like uh I'm good, I'm healthy. That means we are passing some instruction to our own mind, saying that, okay, I'm healthy within, I'm working on my body. I will overcome all my health issues. So it's very important to talk about ourselves in a positive way. And then parallelly work on our physical health. It's not about just talking and leaving aside uh everything, all the other pillars. Uh so I feel that, firstly, we have to work on our diet, nutrition, workout. Mental health, so all the pillars together will help to stay healthy.
Thank you, Jyoti. Or for highlighting why we should focus more on, we should focus on physical health as well. Now, uh Sheelakshmi, I would like to ask, like I went through a post once, which was talking about a fitness routine or being healthy. And I saw a comment below that, that said, what about body positivity? So, like, what should we make out of such cases where people are going to be extreme, like they are just telling people who are showing. Telling something about physical health, they are just commenting that, but body positivity is important. So how would you try to, what are your views on that?
Can you repeat again, Ashwari?
Yes. So there was a post on Instagram which was talking about some fitness routine. And I saw a comment down which said, what about body positivity? So, and what are your views on this perspective of people, like people are. So and what are your views on this perspective of people, like people are thinking that anything related to fitness. Is the power of body positivity away?
Okay, thank you, Ayush. For most of the issue with youngsters is that they will follow social, they will follow social media. And they want their body like them, like social media influencers or bodybuilders. Or celebrities, this kind of things. I had seen mostly with youngsters and teenagers and people who are in early twenties. Yeah, the comments many people will post, but they want their body like, comments many people will post, random comments also, social media trolling happens. But now coming to the uh teenagers, mostly issue with teenagers and I feel people who are in thirty, uh mostly teenagers and youngsters. Want their body like their favorite celebrities, bodybuilders, this kind of things. As I, they will do extreme to do this ahead of. They will do too much their body, they will work out in gym more than their body except sit. Um that and they will consume lot of protein shake. They never realize that, that this is not, some people today doesn't hear it. It's not their age to, a teenager's children doesn't listen to parents also, they are not, as I observed. If, if when someone eats food for one day, more food for, they will starve for more than sixteen hours, that's their type of opportunity. Thinking that I will, I have ate more on previous day. That kind of things I had observed in this kind of thing. And social media influencers, we can't stop from them, definitely we can't stop. That don't watch social media, please, that everyone will watch, if you say no, they will get more tempted to watch it. One thing we can do as people, as image consultant or anyone, in some colleges, they will try to educate students. Being you, you will get, you will be confident, you will be whatever you are. If you want to achieve your goal, you should be yourself. Not trying to have someone else's body, uh have someone else's body, be your, your body, you should be your body, your soul. If you have your body, you will be yourself, not trying, uh if you try to be someone, you will definitely not uh gain it. Uh that is the something like you should, in for my, in my opinion, we should invite some students like this kind of panel discussions. Like being yourself, be yourself. Or uh some in colleges also, it should lecture, professor should invite any people. To train about body positivity, don't influence by social media. The, these kind of things I feel we should introduce in the future. This is my opinion.
Thank you, Shri Lakshmi, for sharing how the social media is creating the. The worst impact on individuals' health and their image, how they see themselves. Uh Dhoni, uh I would like to ask you, like, is it possible to just limit uh everything on social media, like make people. Uh make them understand that, don't, don't go according, according to what you see on social media as you are working in soft skills. So is it possible to make people help to just not be drawn to what social media shows?
No, it's not possible to stop anybody from doing anything, to be very honest. If you want to watch something and you want to idolize Karina Kapoor, you will idolize her. It's like. You tell your brain not to do something, your brain will do that. It is that one thing we humans follow. You cannot stop anybody from doing anything, but what you can do is, you can show them two directions. You can show them two ways. Look, either you want to have a body like Karina Kapoor, you have one. Or either you be confident of who you are and be authentic and be yourself. The decision and the choice is towards the person and we are nobody to stop anybody for that matter. However, in social media, if we talk about very idealized figures, there are people who are plus-size models. There is one social media influencer styled with Sakshi. She's, she is, uh she's plumpy and she's a plus-size model. The way she dresses and the way she styles herself, it is just amazing. So it's all about whom you follow. Are you following the right person? That's the question that we all need to ask. Maybe we can have this kind of discussions. With the people, especially the teenagers, on telling them and guiding them as to, are you doing uh justice? To your body or are you doing justice to your thought process by following the right person and idealizing the right person? That's the question that I feel we need to ask them and that's what we need to make those kids and people around us understand. Social media has a really, uh you know, in today's world, it has the massive impact. And we cannot stop anybody from doing anything. So yeah.
Thank you, Dhoni, for mentioning about that. Yes, like you mentioned about plus-size models, so my next question is according to that only. If people come on screens and see like the plus-size models getting all the fame, like would they be focused on their health? That I would like to ask you, Jyoti. Like will this make people more, more demotivated because they won't get recognition for just going out and working out? And they will see plus-size models be receiving all the fame?
Right. Uh as uh Shri Lakshmi mentioned that uh whatever body you are blessed with, be happy with that. But uh influencing by someone who uh with, what do you like to be or the. Uh which person you want to be, uh for example, Amir Khan uh in Dangal movie, he was overweight because he had that. I mean, he had that shoot, he has to appear that like that character. But once he got another uh film, he lost weight and he had a good nutritionist trainer. Uh and he had put massive effort behind, efforts behind that. So how do you want to be, from whom you are influencing? For example, uh I am influenced by a plus-size model. Uh for example, if I am overweight, that means I'm not working. Okay, they are also like that. That means I'm just seeing them and walking in that way. No problem, they are all like that, people are accepting them. So uh people will accept me also. It's not about that. It's about in my mind, how I want to be. Do I want to be fit? It's not about people accepting me, it's about I am accepting myself. Self-acceptance, self-esteem, self-respect, our own body image, how is, how is it? So it's very important to be um to understand what do you want to be, how do you want to look, having the image in your mind. So and be healthy within.
Thank you, Jyoti, for mentioning how, how whom we idolize is very important. So Shri Lakshmi, I would like to ask you, like, is there a way to create such a perspective in people's mind? To be inclined to love their own bodies and still think about getting healthy? How do we put that perspective in people's mind?
Can you, sorry, Ash, can you repeat once again?
Yeah. Uh how do we put this perspective of loving our own body and still wanting to be healthy in, in people's mind? So that they are able to achieve a more balanced lifestyle?
I always say, I even heard from someone who is very uh very disciplined person, treat your body like a temple. If you treat your body like a temple, body and mind, body you should exercise, mind exercise, brisk, brisk, brisk exercise, whatever is your preference. Some people like to go to, to keep their body, uh only to exercise, not for six, seven packs, only to keep healthy. And for mind, meditation is very important. If you treat body like a temple, body will definitely respond to you, it gives positive response. If you, if your body, the response, if you, if your body is like that, you, you will feel confident, you will love yourself. You will carry yourself, you can carry yourself very, very well. If you carry, you. One thing I had observed, most of the people who are, uh they will not able to achieve what they want because they think that they, they will self pity themselves. Oh, I'm, I'm, she's, she's good looking, she had gone this, she got this, I'm not good looking, I didn't got this, though this is not. It is how you treat yourself. If you love, if you respect, if you confident in yourself, definitely you can achieve what you are. If you, as I told in the beginning, if you treat your body like a temple, body will also respond and spiritually also uh. Great, it will throw light on you, it will, you will be blessed with positive, full of positive vibes, positive vibrations. That is my, I always think of that. Don't come, and one thing is, I feel, please don't compare your body with whom you are, whom you think. Like whether people around you or any celebrities, that is the one thing. If you compare yourself, that is the worst thing, that is the worst thing you are doing for yourself and your body. And for your growth also, please uh be yourself, I always say be yourself, authentic to yourself. What do you, Ayush?
Thank you, Shri Lakshmi. So as you rightly mentioned that we should treat a body like a temple, we should, we should love it and keep it clean and healthy. So Dhoni, I would like to ask you, like, how will, I mean, how does this, how does loving our own body and keeping it healthy? Result in a more confident individual? How will, how can it, how can an individual be more confident by loving their own body and keeping it healthy?
Thank you. So yes, I believe that confidence comes from within. And I have been somebody, if I share my personal story, I was somebody who was, who was slightly towards the fluffy side. Of when I was in my college days and school days, when I came back home and I entered, you know. When I came back home and I went for a family function, people used to just walk up to me and talk to me about, oh my god, Dhani. You've become so fat. Oh my god, Dhani, look what happened to your hair. You've becoming bald. Do something about it. And when people state the obvious, the confidence deteriorate. So what do we do then? How do we manage ourselves? And first of all, you're being so confident and you're just going and going to social gatherings. And at that point of time, if somebody gives you such compliments, do you stand up for yourself? I don't think so, because at that point of time, we feel very, uh we feel very shattered. For that matter, because I have had this feeling. What I have been through and what I have grown so far. What I have understood so far with these experiences is that, just love yourself and love your flaws. That will show your confidence. Be who you are and don't set into this lenses of the society's norms. Stand up for your own norms and stand up for your own values. That is something that will lead you to confidence. With your appearance, with respect to your inner self and outer self, self-image is really very essential, like how Jyoti also mentioned. Be yourself, be authentic and see things and perceive things from your lenses. Don't let others get into your head. I know, saying it's very easy, like you must be saying that, Dhani, you're just saying it so easily. Trust me, I have lived this and experience is talking. So I believe that. You know, confidence comes from within and no matter what people say, if you, you have accepted yourself. That's when you will stand up for yourself. That's my take.
Thank you, Dhoni, for stating how we can develop more confidence with respect for body image and health. Now, Jyoti, one final question to you is, like, is it possible, like, what are the steps in which body positivity and healthy living can go hand in hand?
So uh I, I would like to talk about one example that one of my client. He uh he came to me where he was around one thirty-two kg and his ideal weight BMI uh is seventy-five. So then he uh he said about his own body image, he feels positive about, because even though people talk about him like you're overweight. In his own mind, he is so confident that, okay, no matter, I'm healthy. Uh I'm just looking, my appearance is maybe uh on the heavier side, but uh I'm healthy. But when he got his blood reports, he sho- he was shocked to know that his cholesterol was high, all the parapet as well are in the high range. And then he started working on his own body. So the steps what I, uh what you have asked is, uh first of all, it's about healthy diet. Because diet and nutrition plays eighty percent role uh and workout works twenty percent role in fitness. So diet, nutrition, workout, stress management, sleep quality is very important because nowadays I see a lot of people. Uh think that it is very cool to sleep around twelve thirty, one, two, uh by just browsing something on their phone or laptop. Actually, most of our hormones balance during sleep. It, it is in between ten PM to three AM. So if we are sleeping at twelve thirty, one, two, that means. Hormonal imbalance comes into the picture and hence the health issues, right? So. Sorry. So it's very important to focus on all the pillars like uh diet, nutrition, workout, stress management, sleep quality and also mental health. And that's how you feel positive about your own body.
Ayush, I want to add one thing what Jyoti had mentioned, as I visited a doctor, he is a family doctor, it's where Jyoti, what Jyoti had told, it's very, very. Right. Every human being should sleep at lea- at least at eleven PM, we should go at eleven PM and wake up. Uh we should, and we need minimum eight hours of sleep, that is very, very important. Doctor told me, you do, I know you sleep late, so. Uh you should, you should work on it, you should go to bed at exactly at eleven PM. He, he told me to put sleep track in my mobile also. That is very, very important, otherwise it affects in our whole day also. No, not only every, we should, at least we need, we should wake up at seven, seven AM. That you and I, I'm honestly, before my sleep habit also is not from good. Now after taking few days back, after I started going exactly at eleven PM, this, this I started following it. Thank you, Jyoti, for mentioning it. It's very important.
Thank you, Shri Lakshmi. So that is the end of my questions. If any of you panelists would like to add anything, you are most welcome.
I would like to add one thing here is. Body positivity is fine and exercise is also good, but set realistic goals for yourself. Don't set goals which you don't feel uh you will be able to do justice and be consistent about. I have had such incidents with me and I used to get pumped up that, oh my god, I want to go to gym, I want to lift a five kg of dumbbells. And next day I want to be so powerful. No, it does not work like that. This energy that we have, it's only for stipulated point of time. After that, we start becoming inconsistent. So try to start small. Start by taking ten minutes break, go for work for ten minutes and then again, again increase your time for work. Once you get the interest, once you start that habit, you set a realistic goal for yourself, you will feel motivated and you will not procrastinate. On yourself rather than, you know, just sitting at home and just being on the screen. So set realistic examples and love yourself, love your flaws, be healthy. It's not about doing diets and it's not about only exercising, eat everything, whatever you want to eat, eat chocolates, eat junk. But make sure that everything has a limit, nothing, anything to excess is really bad. So that's my take on it.
And one thing I want to add, most of the people have opinion that uh this, our natural food, which our grandparents had introduced it. It's not good for them. They will take lot of, to burn hunger, they will take tablets, those kind of foreign foods, steroids, steroids I think. And protein shake, those is not acceptable, it has lot of side effects. Please help the food which we have, which we have, we are, we should have, what we are having from the day we are born, our body is used to that, that is very important. That is uh we should have, don't, what we have, when we are born, what could we are used, uh that we are having. Now also we should have it, we shouldn't change it now in the, in our twenties or thirties. Most people do it after coming to certain age, after joining for work, this kind of things.
I have one point to add here. So a lot of people, when they want to lose weight, they go to gym, uh they do uh workouts, high intensity workouts. For one hour, two hours and a lot of people start thinking that they will lose weight, yes, they lose weight, but in an unhealthy way. So uh at one point, Dhoni mentioned that people lose weight, but at, once they stop, they gain all the weight back. So it's of no use, yeah, that means you are just putting lot of efforts, which is of, which, which goes in vain, right? So it's about fixing the root cause, having proper food, workout and then. Le- and then uh heal or fix those health issues. It's about internally, you have to balance your hormones and whatever health conditions are there and then you lose weight in a healthy way. So this is one point and the second point is um about the nutritions, right? So as I am a certified nutrition advisor, um as Shri Lakshmi mentioned about protein shakes or nutrition. It is that, steroids are bad, yes, it is that, uh because it's all about natural food. Uh but nowadays, the soil infertility is more because of growing pollution, a growing population and pollution. Uh what food we are getting nowadays is not same as earlier. So if you eat ten to twelve varieties of vegetables, organic vegetables, then you get almost the required amount of vitamins and minerals. But it is not possible to eat ten to twelve varieties of vegetables in one day. But earlier, you are getting the same amount of vitamins and minerals in uh two to three or four vegetables in olden generation. But why the, the gap, it is because of soil infertility, infertility, uh pesticides, herbicides, the chemicals which are being sprayed on the vegetables. So that is how those uh uh grow, growth hormones are mitigating our own hormones and then. Health issues are growing nowadays. So. health issues are growing nowadays. So it's very important to have organic foods if possible. I know they write organic, but that is not completely organic. Anyhow, something is better than nothing, what I feel. Uh, so good organic food and then the other pillars, exercise and the good nutritions, if there are some gaps, based on the blood parameters, a lot of people are facing the IC, uh, vitamin deficiencies, like vitamin D deficiency, vitamin B twelve deficiency. If there are gaps, it's very important to bridge that nutritional gap and then, uh, lose weight in a healthy way. That's our self-body positive image will be there in our. Thank you. Over to you.
Thank you, Jyoti. So like I think we have established that body positivity should not work in extremes. It should not be like we, we would be of any, any size of or any, anything that, that will, did you hurting our health or that, we should just go and do intense workout only. It should be a balance of the both, something which is more realistic, something which we enjoy and something just sustainable. So I think we have established a quorum there, that it should be a balance of both, loving our body and keeping it healthy. In a realistic, in a way, in a way that we love doing it over and over again. So that is my discussion. The floor is now open to audience. If you want to ask any questions to the panelists, please raise your hand. Yes, I think Sudashen wants to ask.
I heard couple of panelists talking about the good old days when food was better and life was better. Would any of the panelists be able to throw some light on what was the average life expectancy of an Indian as recently as nineteen ninety five? And then we can talk about what is the average life expectancy today and therefore why food today is better than why food was for back then. Anyone? Since you participated in a panel where you stated that food that we eat today is not so great as food used to be in the past.
Yeah, I would like to talk about it, uh. Forgot your name. Uh, so like average life expectancy in olden days, uh, in nineties, it was around, uh, seventy to eighty years and ninety years I can say, but now it's sixty or fifty because lot of youngsters.
Grossly optimistic. It was fifty eight in nineteen ninety two, it is seventy one today. So food in fact has become better. That's the only thing I want to say right now because I will get an opportunity to speak later. When we come on panels, it is imperative that we do some research before we state any of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. In my opinion, I, I feel that, um, because I've seen, um, some, uh, I've seen, uh, some videos where, uh, we all know that pesticides and herbicides are being sprayed. Uh, and the soil infertility is also, uh, growing nowadays. So the food is good. The, the government is working on that, but the moment we are, uh, the food is reaching our home, lot of nutrients are getting evaporated. Because, uh, in the farm, it is fresh and from there, the moment it is reaching to our home, it's almost, uh, uh, maybe fifteen to twenty days, right? So a- after cooking, cutting and washing the vegetables, what nutrition we are getting in our body is only forty to fifty percent. So in that way, it is affecting our health. So in olden days, yes, uh, if you say the life expectancy is, uh, was low, maybe it's not about nutritional deficiency, but because of not much medical research was there, maybe, I'm not sure about that. But nowadays we see lot of health issues just because of eating lot of unhealthy food, right? And nutritional deficiencies. That's my take.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lashan, for your questions. Thank you, Jyoti, for answering. Any, any other questions from the audience?
So I have one question. Uh, so, um, I'm hearing this talk about body positivity. So there is also a lot of stigma with, you know, people criticize those who do body shaming and all that, right? So like if you take today's discussion, um, on one hand, we say be comfortable with your body. We are saying that it doesn't matter what clothes you want to wear, uh, you should not restrict yourself and all those kind of gyan on one hand. On the other hand, we are saying, you know, come in perfect shape. So which, and this is a question particularly for maybe Dhani or Sri Lakshmi, uh, one of the image consultants can answer this question. On one hand, you are saying that, you know, be comfortable with your body, wear whatever you want. Uh, don't let other people judge you. On the other hand, you're having a forty minutes panel discussion saying that come in shape. Uh, so what, uh, what exactly are we trying to do here? Like you are confusing me.
Uh, may I go first, Sri Lakshmi? Yes, thank you so much. So firstly, I'm not an image consultant, I'm a soft skills trainer, but according to my knowledge, uh, we were having this discussion of, uh, not particularly getting into shape. We were talking about healthy living, healthy lifestyle, not having that idealized body that we all want. And, uh, for a matter of fact, yes, uh, there are lot, there are lot of criticism that we all have and, there are lot of criticism with respect to how we look and how our body is perceived for that matter. But the whole idea was that even though you are loving yourself and you are being yourself, being authentic, being original, the one thing is to also have a healthy living and eating right food. It's not about you becoming.
You are not, I lost, I lost, we are not able to hear you, Dhani.
Okay, can you hear me now? No, Dhani is audible to me.
No, the last two words which is, she said something was.
Yeah, there was some bit which got lost.
Which is okay. Yeah, you can continue.
Okay, so what I'm trying to convey here is it's not about getting into shape. We were not mentioning about getting into shape. We were only mentioning about eating right food and good nutrients. Because if you want to live longer and you want to have a good life, you also need to get nutrients in your body. So that's my take.
And Saurav, you and I also tell people who mostly tell people, don't be, uh, it's okay to be in your own shape. It's, you should be confident, you should love yourself, you should, uh, love yourself, then only, that is very important, that is, self-love is important. Whatever body shape you are blessed with.
So Sri Lakshmi, that's exactly the gyan that I'm talking about that we get. Yourself and all that. And then there are long, uh, you know, motivational talks about going to the gym and slimming down. So it's very confusing for someone. So should we slim down or should we not slim down? Should we continue to be fat? Which one are we promoting here, right? So that's the question. And then one related question to what Dhani said, uh, eating the right food, right? So if you ask someone like Jyoti here, she'll say, ki eat kerala rice, right? Because that is low carb and you should not. But the problem is I come from East India and I love my basmati rice and I love my gurindubog rice, which are high on calories. So, um, my dad and my mom and my ancestors have eaten there. And now you're telling me to eat right means eat, eat a kind of rice that you're, that doesn't sound very, you know, for me. So.
No, what I was trying to convey by eating right food over here is, uh, according to my knowledge, okay? Jyoti, you can add whatever you want to add, but according to my knowledge, what I meant was eat home cooked meal. And whatever you're eating, make sure you eat, eat it properly.
My home cooked meal, uh, Dhani, a typical Bengali diet sounds like this, uh, white rice, boiled potatoes, uh, fried fish, uh, dal with a lot of butter and gorgi. Uh, and I'm pretty sure that Jyoti, by now she is getting a heart attack thinking that, okay, this is not a right diet. I know.
Saurav, I want to add one thing. Even being a Mangolian, I also eat those kind of foods. I mean, we eat a lot of South Indian foods. We should, I told in the, I told already in the panel discussion, we should eat, we shouldn't change our diet as we grow into coming particularly. We should eat particular food which our ancestors introduced to us. That is very important. Which our ancestors introduced our food and we should, that is very important. We should consume those kind of foods only, not other.
Sri Lakshmi, I'm, I'm only stating my question was for Jyoti because she is a nutritionist. Yeah.
So as lo-, yeah, I would like to add, as long as you are comfortable with your body, as long as you are healthy by eating home cooked food, white rice, potato, that's fine. If you have a goal to lose weight, some modifications in your food will go. And yes, Vani also rightly mentioned, home cooked food is fine and avoid junk food. Because of that, uh, junk food, it is adding not only calories, but it is not doing good for our body. It is not adding any nutrients to our body. Why to, why to eat when it is not good for our body, right?
A lot of potatoes and rasgulla is fine.
Again, yeah, see, as long, as I mentioned, as long as you're comfortable with your body, if you don't have any goal as such or if you, uh, are healthy, then fine. If you are, for example, if sugar levels are high and if you're eating lot of rasgullas, it is not safe, right?
Fair enough.
Thank, thank you, Saurav. Like, we are running out of time, but yes, we can take one more questions and don't worry, we will be connecting with the panelists again after the discussion ends. So like one last question, I think can come from Neha.
Okay, thanks, Aayush. And my question is to Jyoti. So, um, I recently went for a health checkup and I was, uh, told that I'm vitamin B deficient, vitamin D deficient and couple of other vitamins. And I was given, uh, so many tablets, like you're supposed to take this, this, this on a daily basis, like two in the morning, three in the night and blah, blah, blah. And I'm someone who have never had tablets, like I'm anti-tablet person. So what would you say to that? Like, uh, is it okay to consume so many tablets? Because it was recommended by a very early good doctor. Is it okay, not okay? What would your take be?
What I feel is medicines are some things which is synthesized in labs. Those are synthetic. Uh, food or nutrition, so those are organic, which are plants and food-based extract, right? So if you can, uh, get it from your food, why to take medicines? You, you can take medicines if something is at extreme level. If vitamin D is very low, that means you can just, uh, increase the value by taking medicines. But if the value is somewhere in the middle and that means, you don't have to go for medicines, you can just, uh, substitute that with your food which is high in vitamin D, high in vitamin B twelve.
But then it's just supplements, right? Like, I mean, why not just take them? Is it going to cause any harm?
Supplements are different, medicines are different. Supplements are food and, uh, as I mentioned, it's, uh, again, there are two types of supplements. Organic and synthetic. Uh, medicines are synthetic which is made in labs as I mentioned. So, uh, you can get that vitamin D or vitamin B twelve, uh, with the supplements and medicines also. Uh, but what I feel is better to go with the nutritional supplement because, uh, in the long run will not have any effect. But lot of people taking, uh, some vitamin D or vitamin B or antibiotics, they are disrupting their gut health as well. If they are taking for the long term, right? So what I feel is get it from, uh, food or supplements, it is better. And medicines, you can get it, but if your, uh, level is very low, uh, you see if, uh, for example, uh, high fever or, uh, uh, low energy levels, right? Extreme condition. At that time, take medicines. Don't wait for that two to three months so that my nutrition will help me, no. Uh, you have to go for medicines when it is at extreme level, but when you're healthy, just by seeing the blood report, you have to take medicines.
Thanks, Jyoti.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Jyoti. And thank you for all the questions. I see Alok and Mita also had some question, but since we are running out of time, I would request you to send all the questions to the panelists. We will get back to you with all the answers. Don't worry. Anyone in the audience, if you want any questions, you can join us later, ask, uh, or ask me, ask, send the, send forward the questions and I will ask the panelists and get back to you. So, yeah, I would like to thank all the audience, audience for bearing with the panel, panel discussion and all the panelists, Sri Lakshmi, Dhani and Jyoti, for joining us and providing such valuable insights to our coolest discussion on this topic, which has been going on for some time now. So, thank you again very much. This is the end of my discussion. Thank you for being here.
Thanks so much. Thank you Toastmaster Aayush. That was a very interesting session that you moderated with our three lovely ladies of the Gabby's Toastmaster Dhani, Toastmaster Jyoti and Toastmaster Sri Lakshmi. Thank you so much for your time and valuable inputs. Thanks a lot. And now, moving on to the most, uh, interesting session, I would say. And which is extremely important for all of us to grow, learn and kind of progress in this journey. So yes, uh, let's start the evaluation session without any further ado. And to do this, I would like to call upon the first evaluator of the panel moderator, one Toastmaster Mamta. Um, Toastmaster Sri La-, Toastmaster Lakshmi Sujata on stage. Yeah. Over to you, Lakshmi.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Neha and Toastmaster Mamta. As a moderator today on a very serious and important topic that you brought up. Lovely questions, brilliant answers by the panelist because you had a fabulous panelist with you. People who are experienced in their field. Now, as a moderator, let me tell you, this is one of my favorite projects as well. And I think in both my paths, I have done this twice because I really love the essence of this project. This project comes with, um, I would say it is a mixture or it is an amalgamation of many other projects. One, active listening. Second, Q and A, how you handle Q and A. Third one is how you manage time, right? This is a combination of all these projects together. Now, coming to a moderator, there are certain, uh, qualities or there are certain attributes that a moderator should have. And today, did I see it? Yes, I did see a few of those qualities. Let me see what are the, uh, let me just share with you what are the main points that I saw today. One, you were an active listener. Now, why do I say you were an active listener? After every question that you asked and after they answered, after each of the panelists answered that question, I did see that you were summarizing it or you were giving your viewpoint there. Now, and you also tried to derive questions based on the answers that was given by the panelist, which was good. You know, you were actively listening to what was happening. Second thing, as a moderator, it is very important that you are very well prepared on the topic. It's not just about what the panelists have to say, it is also about what the moderator prepares on that topic. I did see that as well. Now let me come to some of the very important areas of improvement and here comes the time management. On the time management sector, uh, my apologies, but I would like to say that we were a little behind. Because ideally, in a panel discussion, you should have time allocated for question answers from the audience. Because audience engagement is again important. The main reason you are conducting this program or this panel discussion is for the audience to understand or for the audience to understand why are you doing this at the end of the day, right? Uh, so I think the time management could have been better. And as a moderator, as I said, research is important. Equally, with that, the terminologies that you use is also important. They are panelists and not panel. Like you address them as panel one, panel two, panel three. No, they are panelists. Each of those members are panelists, okay? And another thing that I'm not sure if you had taken into consideration was where these questions shared with the panelists well in advance. If you had probably that one issue where I think one of the panelists, you had asked them a question on agriculture. But then she said she was not sure of it and it had to be passed on. Probably that kind of ambiguities would not have occurred. So overall, to summarize, I would say that I wish that you could try reconsider redoing this project once again. Because one of the main criteria, which is time management, was not met. Okay? Other than that, active listening was great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're there.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Toastmaster Lakshmi for that detailed evaluation. And now I'd like to call upon our evaluator too, uh, to DTM Sudharshan for his evaluation. Over to you, DTM Sudharshan.
Thank you very much. For our Toastmasters and guests, the title of our speakers today was panel moderator. There are two keywords that we need to look at. One is what is panel? What is moderation? A panel is a group or a board of people who come together to discuss a topic. What is moderation? Moderation is the art and science of ensuring that all viewpoints get due time on stage to be displayed. So today we heard a topic which was very hotly debated these days, which is on body positivity and body shaming and therefore the peril scenario. So I would like to plunge into this evaluation from the perspective of enabling our panel moderator to improve upon the next time he ever attempts to do this kind of project.
to improve upon the next time he ever attempts to do this kind of project. First and foremost, the way one chooses the panel is very critical. We had this panel which had three people who were all in sync with the opinion that body positivity is the need of the hour. Therefore, the second part of the word panel moderation, the moderation bit went out the window right at the start. But there was no need for moderation, all the three panelists were agreeing on every single point. Second, could the panel moderator have done something differently? Of course, the answer is yes. The questions could have been so framed to insight, to elicit and to excite the panelists so that they could take anti-order positions, which would have then led to him displaying his skills as a moderator in trying to ensure each voice is heard. If you don't believe me, in the evening today, switch on your TV and then one guy shouting at the screen saying, Nani, shut up! The reason why he does that is because everybody on the panel should get excited and should get involved in the discussion. That is the skill of a panel moderator. The other thing that happened, which I witnessed today and I'm sorry I'm not following the sandwich method as we are advised to follow because I believe there is ample scope for improvement. The second thing that I realized was about twenty percent of the discussion time was what the moderator thought. The rest of the eighty percent was firmly controlled by the three ladies because they were coming with opinion after opinion after opinion, all of which was in concord with the question, which meant that as audience members, we didn't see a panel discussion or a panel debate. What we heard was three people reiterating the same points over and over and over again. If one said you need to be happy with your body, the others said you need to eat to make sure that your body is great. Then the third person said, yes, I agree with the two of them. And that therefore ensured that this debate did not take place in the form of a panel debate. It was more like three people telling us A, B and C are all the same and therefore we are all saying same. All in all, I would like to tell our panel moderator that there is ample scope for improvement. This project must be repeated because the way it has happened today, in my opinion as a evaluator, I cannot claim that your objectives have been met and therefore I would firmly say that this project has to be done once. Thank you and back to you, President.
Thank you, D T M Sudharshan. Yes, we are all here to learn and we will. Thanks so much for your valuable inputs. Uh can we have the timer report before we launch the polls? Uh Toastmaster Gihan, can you give us the uh timer report?
Yes, thank you, uh Toastmaster Neha. Uh may I need to share or just say this even enough?
Uh you can just let us know if everyone was well within the time.
Yeah, yeah. Uh only that evaluator, D T M Sudarsh, Sudarsh, only uh within the time period, other all out of disqualified. I mean, the total, both panel discussion and first evaluation disqualified, only D T M Sudarsh had only qualified with the timing.
All right, that's a very interesting timer report that we had today. Thanks so much, Toastmaster Gihan. Uh so do we have, no, so we would not be able to have polls today. Uh all right, um I think it was a very interesting session today. Uh Sunday morning started off with great energy, enthusiasm and amazing panel moderators and panelists with some very critical evaluations that we had today. Yes, indeed, we're taking back a lot of learnings from this session today. And um yes, I would love to get feedbacks from the members and guests present in the meeting today. Can we have some feedbacks? Um Mohammed Abbas?
Yeah, good morning.
Yes.
Really, I'm, thank you very much for an opportunity to participate in such a wonderful discussion with the entire team. So really, all the panelists as well as your team, you know, they are delivering their good information, it's very motivated to me. Yes, I know, recently I delivered a speech on stress management to my club. I am the member of Jitta Tamil Toastmaster Club. So that I noticed when I read, you know, when we deliver a speech, I read a lot of information over the books as well as online. That one third of diseases caused by the stress, it's either directly or indirectly. So what the panelists discussed here, you know, all the points addressed that we be positive in our life and successful in our career. Really, I'm very thank you and looking for that another meeting, the single subject will be upcoming days. Thank you, thank you for all the team.
Thanks so much for your input, Toastmaster Mohammed.
Thank you.
Uh we love having you back in our meetings. Thanks so much. Um I think Toastmaster A- Alok Kumar had a question. So if you still wanna ask, you feel, feel free to ask, we still have a few panelists on board. Toastmaster Alok? Yeah, please unmute yourself, yeah.
Uh thanks, Neha, no. No, actually, I was having a different, like, one question I was having, but not really questions like I was having opinion on that uh to uh in the last like, I was really enjoying the very first panel discussions. And in the, in the end, some question was asked like, are we really uh talking about the uh toxic positive and in which the panel they responded? I really felt that uh I wanted to add my opinion because in every society, any organization, any family, any country, any state for that matter, everywhere there is a problem and challenges. Uh any part of that, we are having different eyes of, today might be in our country, corruption is that one problem. Uh pollution is might be another problem, traffic might be another problem. But other country, we are, when we are referring to other countries, the strong countries, they might be having different problem and challenges. When we go into their shoes, they, they, they look into our shoes and they say that they, we as a eastern countries are doing better. So I think uh we should always look into that what lens we are looking at and the way that moderation was going on, like talking about positivity. So we should talk about the positive and that will, that's the way we all grow and looking at the positive rather than draining out our negative, negative rather than focus on our negativity, it will drain our energy.
Thank you so much, yeah, thank you so much, Alok, for your valuable inputs. Yes, indeed, I thoroughly enjoyed today's meeting simply for the fact that we had a lot of learning, Sunday morning filled with learnings and I officially adjourned the special meeting today. Thank you one and all for joining the meeting. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Bye bye.
Thank you, bye bye. Thank you.